Members of council, as you may notice, the mayor and the mayor pro tem are unable to be with us this evening. And according to your local rules, that you, rules of procedure for the council, it is appropriate when neither of those persons can be here that you from the four that are here would elect someone to preside over the meeting. So at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for someone to preside over this workshop meeting this evening.
I nominate council member Jerry Bittner to preside over our meeting this evening.
I'll move the nominations to be closed and accepted by acclamation.
And if it's a second to that?
Is that on second? Yes, I'll do the second on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Bittner, I'll turn it over to you and I will say it. I didn't get the gavel.
The first item of business is the adoption of the proposed agenda, and I believe we have an amendment.
I'd ask council that you add for number 11, a presentation on the joint mental health facility, please.
Motion to amend the agenda as noted.
So move second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is amended. Next item is the adoption of the minutes and consent items. October 17th, regular workshop meeting minutes and October 17th, regular council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Been moved to second. Any discussion? Not? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. First item workshop topic is ITS event recovery planning. I'll turn that over to Dr. Woodruff.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'd like to take a moment of special privilege, and at this time, I'd like to recognize Ron Massey. So I'm going to stand up over here.
Yeah. Hey. Hey.
Contrary to pocket or belief, Ron has not been with the city since the early 1800s. But he has successfully completed 10 years of dedicated service. This time, we would like to commend him publicly. We'll also give him a token that is the city seal with a special, I don't know, it's diamond or ruby, or some type of jewelry that's in it. But Ron, on behalf of the city, we thank you all. Now, that was very difficult for me to do, given the fact that Ron's Army team beat Air Force this past weekend 21 to nothing. And they also accomplished a major milestone by being the first football team in modern football, college football, to go the entire game without even attempting a forward pass. And they still scored 21 points and ran up over 400 yards of offense. So, Mr. Massey, Army is to be duly noted.
Wow, that goes back to...
Enjoy it while it lasts.
What was that Butch Davis? And who were some of those running backs they had back in the 40s?
You got me, of course, Red Blake was the coach and, yeah.
You taught him, did you, Ron?
Yes.
You taught him?
Right, right, yes.
Glenn Davis. Glenn Davis.
Yep. And the other one, yeah, I forget the other name.
Yeah, there is one more.
But again, well done, Army team. Well done. This evening for the workshop, we do have four items we'd like to discuss with you. First is the ITS event recovery. And I'd like to give just a moment of introduction. As many of you, as all of you know, and many citizens know, several months ago, in Raleigh, the North Carolina League of Municipalities offices suffered a fire. It was a catastrophic fire that literally burned the buildings to the point where they could not be used. The league did not have in their normal operating procedures a catastrophic recovery plan. And therefore, they had to, if I may use the term politely, scramble to figure out where they were going to be housed and how they were going to operate. That brought to our attention the fact that we certainly have an emergency recovery program when there's a hurricane or a tornado. But we really don't have an internal program that says if we had a major fire, or if, 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 how would we operate? How would we get our water and sewer bills out? How would we collect our revenues? How would we pay our employees? So we've begun a dialogue with a number of departments, specifically beginning with IT, to create a plan that we will hope in the next three or four months, we will begin to submit to you for your consideration. Tonight, I'd like to ask Chris and Ron if they would walk through, though, our beginning thoughts of how we will have a recovery program. So at this time, Chris, you and Ron, thank you.
Good evening, members of the council, members of the public. Let me just start with introducing our IT system from a very high level perspective. So we basically, you know, several years back, we had one data center here in City Hall and one data center at the old police station. And we had the opportunity to do it right with the construction of the new public safety complex and create what I would consider a state-of-the-art, modern data center that basically serves as a primary now for the old city businesses. The other opportunity that emerged on the horizon in the last five years was in construction of the intelligent transportation system when DOT came in and basically stretched fiber throughout city. City used that opportunity to attach additional fiber strands for just city use. And that allowed us to have a dedicated private connection between city buildings. So now, water plants, Fire Station 4, Fire Station 3, all city buildings that are spread across town are connected to our infrastructure via our fiber network. So let's go to kind of looking at one of the aspects, which is external connectivity. Anytime we have a major event, our service providers are exposed to outages. And if they have outage, then that causes outage on our side if we're depending on just one. So several years ago, we just had two internet connections that were basically through, at that time, Time Warner and CenturyLink. Construction of the NC-RAN, MCNC, which basically is throughout the whole North Carolina and connects all the mainly public school facilities, allow a company, Clarity, to sell internet to not school facilities. And we looked at it as opportunity to have diversified connection outside of just two. We had examples of outages that both of the companies had in a very short, you know, span of time. And I believe before I came onboard, there was outage for several hours that city could not operate, that there was no connectivity. Clarity giving us additional, very different connection, that's a very solid fiber optic network, gave us basically two points. So it's a point of presence. We have it here in City Hall. So it's a total of four redundant connections total. And at this point, we haven't experienced any outages. And like Dr. Woodruff mentioned, in a catastrophic event, we still think that if any of the two buildings would survive, we would be, we would be good from the bandwidth standpoint. What does that mean to a city taxpayer? Basically, quality of service. We have increasing demand for bandwidth. You know, we used to use internet for simple things, typing emails, sending documents. Now, the training occurs, this very meeting is streamed over the internet. All that requires additional bandwidth. So we exponentially increase the bandwidth over time. At the same time, competitiveness among service providers allow us to decrease the price of those services or keep it at the same level. So let's go to internal connectivity. It's as important to connect two data centers together. So if one has any issues, whether it's a technical issue or whether there's a power issue, we need to be able to basically, without any interruption to services, transfer production equipment from one data center to another. So we have city-owned underground connection that goes through New Bridge Street. Then we have additional lease fiber from former Time Warner Spectrum currently. And also, we have a fiber that was, it's an overhead fiber that was installed during the ITS system implementation. It's a city-owned fiber. And another connection that we have is council for many years asked for external backup. So we lease a dedicated, what's called metro E-connection to Town of Cary where they, you know, it's in a local agreement, when they allow us to keep our backup. So we have a backup onsite and it syncs with the backup in Town of Cary. This is very good. There's a, there's a, basically, let's go over our current infrastructure. So we have the network, and I covered the network connectivity between the two sides. Then we have the compute. Those are all the servers, all the processing of everything that's happening here. And we have a storage. And that's where police videos, that's where our documents are, that's where databases, all that, you know, data that city collects and produces is being stored. And the last component is a backup, and it's onsite and offsite. This is our current situation, current system design. But like Dr. Woodruff said, what happens when both buildings are not available? The only things that would remain, the only thing that would remain is a backup in Town of Cary. Where would we restore that backup? We would have to purchase equipment, we would have to purchase servers, we would have to purchase storage and start restoring it. That may take several weeks. We don't have several weeks to restore it. And that's why we propose basically looking at new technology, opportunities of life cycling our current equipment without additional costs, with new interlocal agreements. We're proposing to use some of our existing equipment that would be replaced from the lifecycle standpoint, would be perfectly fine for another two, three years as a disaster recovery equipment. So I'm not proposing here an additional cost. I'm proposing here that we use what we currently have as a disaster recovery equipment, and as lifecycle, we replace our current technology with a new technology that allows faster processing, easier management, and meets the current expectations of our users. It's called hyper-converged. It's a, it's a technology, I like to call it, it's kind of repeats itself. We used to be in the mainframe, then we went to PCs, and now we're heading into that phase of everything integrated. When we need to add additional storage, let's say we have additional demand for high-definition police videos, or we need to basically buy a new appliance. With this new technology, it's all packed into components. So you add it here, and it basically is intelligent enough to recognize that there's additional compute, there's additional storage, and hey, we don't have to replace anything. It basically is intelligent enough to be able to grow as the needs for storage and compute is introduced on the city side. I don't know, Ron, if you wanted to add anything to what I said, but I would emphasize here that this external side is a partnership between the cities where we will be able to use another city's server rooms and their connectivity to locate, to collocate our equipment. And we are looking at two computer racks, so it's a pretty significant size in equipment. And they already agreed to it, and so...
Who's the city?
The Town of Cary.
So it ends up being sort of a standby data center that kept up to date, and we would only basically start operating on it if we lost our data centers here in Jacksonville.
Both, both data centers. So it would have to be a major event. When you think about something like a, you know, huge hurricane, the thing is, we have two data centers, but they're only half a mile away from each other. If we have a major hurricane and that would affect both buildings, I don't believe we would be able to take advantage of either one of those facilities. And like Dr. Woodruff said, you know, plan and redundancy is, that's what would allow us to restore services in a relatively short period of time. We're talking about hours, not days or not weeks. And we would be able to be back online.
And we do annually budget for lifecycle replacement of different parts of the system. So we're at a point where we were planning on upgrading, you know, storage and basically the servers. And so what we're saying is we'll update with the new technology, you know, and take the best components of the current technology and create that standby data center.
What would you have done in the past when you life-cycled this stuff out? Would you just put it on...
The easiest...
... sales or something like that?
The easiest, oh, oh, how do we do that? Usually, it's a trading program. So the vendors basically have a program where they give us a certain credit for equipment that we use. We used to have a program through the city where old computers were available for city employees to be purchased. But since we went to Citrix and we operate, I would say 90% on thin client, which is, it only can work in a city environment on Citrix, it really cannot be used as a home computer, we discontinued that program. As far as the point that Mr. Massey raised, you know, the simplest thing is kind of look at things, okay, well, let's replace this with a new model, right? You have a 2000 Ford and you're replacing with 2020 Ford, right?
What were you replacing it with?
2020 Ford.
Ford. Just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Well, but now we're looking at, okay, well, we don't have to do the same thing. So we're looking at everything, comparing everything, and looking at the new technology and saying, do we really want to go the same route? You know, the expectations of customers exponentially increase. You know, if we have outage for 15 minutes, all of a sudden, everybody is, whoa, I cannot do my job, you know? I need my computer to be up and running. So we really need to have something stable, something reliable, something that provides what we call in IT, .999 reliability, you know? So let's go to benefits of what we discussed. We will still continue replication to backup onsite and offsite.
But those are, again, just the data files. You know, that's not any processing capability. And that's the difference of what we're talking here, is we'll continue to have data backup in that, but we'll also have a backup data processing capability.
Operational capability.
I guess what I don't understand is you make it appear that Cary has this configuration of equipment available for us in case of a disaster. No?
That's not, that's not what I tried to communicate. What I tried to communicate, if you look at this graph on the right side, the three-tier architecture, that's our current architecture. So what I'm proposing is basically we'll take our current equipment that we currently have in one of the data centers, and we literally put it on the back of the truck, drive it to Cary, put it in their data center, connect it through secure connection, make sure that there's no, you know, exposure to any viruses or anybody hacking into the system. And in their environment, install our equipment that we currently own, so they're not giving us anything other than space, power, and connectivity.
That equipment that we currently have is mounted in racks in our server room. So what they're allowing us is to go into their server room and mount our equipment in the racks that they have.
Now, let me say it a little bit this way. What we currently have is a storage backup system for all of our data in Cary.
Right.
What we're now proposing is, in addition to storing, we're going to start operating from Cary. So what we're going to do is set up the ability to operate all city functions, or at least the vital functions, out of an offsite location. If you remember, probably seven or eight years ago, council asked us to, what are we doing to store our data? Where are we backing it up? And the answer was, three blocks up the street of the police department. And y'all said, no, we don't think that's a good idea. So we went to Cary, went out to a number of places, and Chris, because of his relationship with Cary, they've agreed to let us store our data up there. Now, we're going from storage to operating capacity. So if the police center and the city hall could not provide the operating capacity, we will now be able to operate out of Cary.
Correct.
That's, that's the plan.
Is there a charge for this capability?
It's a government-to-government, it's a relationship that we have. We would return the same favor. As a matter of fact, I asked them if they want to have some equipment closer to the coast. We've got great recreational area, we've got, you know, ocean nearby, and they said they would consider it, but not right now.
But we have offered, then, as an interlocal, basically, we'll let them use our facility for an offsite operating center. We can use their facility for an offsite operating center. Now, that doesn't mean that we will have personnel in Cary. What it means is we'll have the technical hardware, software. And you can tell, while I'm very well-versed in this, I thought it'd be more appropriate for Chris to give you the details, since he's the IT director. But at the same time, you actually took that as straight face, sir. That was good. You're a good chairman of this group tonight. But again, what we're talking about is one of our first functions in recovery is to figure out, how do we get all of our systems to operate? Now, keep going.
And systems are very complex. There's almost no one system that does it all. So what are the benefits? Redundant connectivity, we have redundant data centers. So now we're talking about, now we have two. We're looking at a possibility of adding the third side that would give us a, basically a production side. So with those two sides off, IT can redirect our city employees to access data center in Cary within several hours, and we will be back in operation, like Dr. Woodruff said. Increased reliability, faster recovery time. We're not talking about days or weeks, we're talking about hours. We would have our Citrix environment, departmental folders, and email in a relatively short period of time. Where we need to still be looking is our current ERP system, our financial system is based on a different equipment. It's called AS400. Currently, it's, the software is called Superior, formerly SoundGuard. We are looking at a different option with that. It's very complex, and we're looking at having production side in city and having a disaster recovery side in cloud. So that possibly would be provided by, a provider that supports that type of technology, specializes in that type of technology. It's not, not everybody provides that type of service.
Now, one of the key things here about the AS400, while what we're setting up already in Cary gives us the ability to basically operate, it doesn't give us the ability to do financial. The AS400 is the backbone of our financial side.
Now, when you say financial, are we talking billings?
Yes.
Billings for all of the different services that we provide?
Yes. Yeah, we've got a number of packages that we've got on the financial management system, the HDE system, like, for example, development services, there's a package that's on the HDE system, as well as water billing.
Planning permitting.
Yes. That's exactly right. But right now, we have two HDE, two AS400 computers, and we go through the same kind of lifecycle planning. We have one of the computers that's here and one that's in public safety. But rather than replacing one here, what we're saying is, we'll look at where can we get that service from the cloud? You know, that way, we won't have both of those pieces of equipment here in Jacksonville where they'd be vulnerable to a disaster. So we'll still have backup, but we'll do it with one in the cloud, one set up locally. And again, we'll use our lifecycle funds to transition into that operational concept as opposed to the one we're currently operating under.
It's called a hybrid solution. You know, cloud, several years ago, became a very popular term. A lot of people jumped on it, and now they're scratching their head and trying to figure out how to get out of it because it's expensive. You know, cloud is expensive when you use it. When you have a service that's on standby, disaster recovery is not being used often. This is only used in a disaster situation. So I think that that's the recommendation from the staff, that we move to the hybrid solution, where they have experts to maintain this system. The other aspect of it is 911 dispatch. We currently have a primary site in public safety center and a backup site for the city here in City Hall. Police chief and along with us, we're looking at opportunities to address it. So if both buildings are not available, where would we restore that service? Where would we be able to go and actually use our software, our data, our operation? And that's still on the table. This move will not take care of this one aspect. So I just wanted to identify what we will address with this and what is still remaining to have a full disaster recovery plan that it's relying on facilities that's not here in Jacksonville.
What kind of disaster, I guess, and looking some practicality as to what would cause CenturyLink to not be able to provide the service?
CenturyLink, I can tell you the last two times...
Just using that as a, one of your, it's a broadband carrier, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And what they basically told us, in one event, it was a UPS failure in City of Fayetteville. And another event that I remember was a backhoe operator cut the main cable in Apex, North Carolina.
Well, what you're actually asking is, for a catastrophic event, while a backhoe driver cutting the cable is certainly a major event, the type of things that you're asking about would be some, like a category three or greater storm, or something in the way of a major fire that really took out one of our buildings.
Tornado.
Tornadoes, those type of natural disasters, and of course, you know, who knows what else might come along?
See, there, since I've been here, there's been at least one storm where we were not able to use the internet out of City Hall, which was provided basically by CenturyLink because their system went down. And, you know, we operate on Web EOC. Well, by definition, you have to get on the internet to plug into Web EOC. So that's why those paths, the three paths to internet connectivity, we think are important. Just increases the likelihood, the reliability, the probability that you're going to be able to get to the internet, you know, from one of those sources.
And again, the parts that we, you've obviously seen what we've identified, and you see the parts that we have not figured out yet. I can tell you, when a major hurricane comes through your community, as I experienced many times in South Florida, you don't just suddenly have the ability to start billing and collecting again. You don't just suddenly have the ability to start issuing paychecks to your employees again. So what we have to do is use the opportunity on the AS400. We also have to make sure that we have a system that can be there when all the 911 system we're currently using is down. So those are chapters, we still have to figure out, how are we going to write those? Because, you know, you look at Houston, you look at Puerto Rico, I mean, a CAT 5 could come through here, you know, next summer. So what we're trying to do is find a way that we can continue to provide the quality services, make sure that everybody is communicating, and I think, you know, this is the first And I, I think, you know, this is the first of probably three or four or five presentations we're going to make to you that show you how we're putting it together. One of the other elements we have to put together is, where do we house people if we lose one of our buildings? When the league lost their building, they went from everybody having an office to the next morning, nobody having an office. And fortunately, they had enough training and enough ability that people were able, within two days, to start operating from their own homes. But there, it took the league literally three months to find rental space that they could then get their people back in an office location. So there are many chapters of this book that we have not yet written, but that's what our goal.
Your three broadband carriers, is that all here as a physical connection?
Correct.
And you're only using one of them, CenturyLink?
No, we're using all three of them at the same time, so.
Oh, you are.
So if we would go to.
Why?
Why? Because of redundancies. It's, you know, when we had Centrallink outage, or Time Warner outage several months ago, there was several hours outage, nobody in the city saw the difference. Because we, what we have is basically a device that takes three connections and manages your requests. So if we're using, at any given time, let's say, 150 megs per, you know, bandwidth demand, it manages, so if this connection is busy, it will send you through this connection, and it's seamless. To users, you don't know which connection you're, you're basically using. So we have a, a device that manages, basically brokers those connections. And the important thing is that those connections are not just, it's Time Warner or it's just Centrallink. We had two Time Warner connections available at Public Safety Building. One coming from Jacksonville, one coming from Wilmington. Since we had Centrallink from Jacksonville, we connected to Time Warner Wilmington. So if Central, if Time Warner office in Jacksonville would go down, our connection still is coming from Wilmington. So we try to have, those connections are not coming through one path. So one event, whether it's a backhoe, or whether it's, you know, car crashing into a pole where the fiber is attached to, would not take all three connections, would only take one. So it's called geo-diversified. So we make sure that those cables don't go parallel to each other, next to each other, at any point.
And the billing for these various bandwidths, that's all done electronically in terms of usage time?
That's correct.
Well, it's not time per.
It's not time. We, we have a dedicated commercial bandwidth. So we have 100 through Time Warner, we have 100 through Centrallink, and we have 600 through Clarity.
Oh, you pay some, you're paying a flat rate depending.
That is correct.
Regardless of how much.
Usage we.
Usage you use, okay.
But we manage it. So we monitor our usage, and if we have to increase it, we increase it. We started at few megs, and, you know, it's all about how fast do we want to operate? And users complain when system is slow, when their transaction online or, you know, streaming video, this, this, this meeting is streamed right now, and a lot of users watch it through Facebook and other media.
There's just a lot of things that we use, like, for example, our online training. We use, we have a service that we, we log into the internet, basically, and do safety training individually. And that, and those are things, when that's going on, you don't have control as to how many users are on the system at any one time. Same thing, sometimes we'll send out a, a burst of email messages. You know, and, and what that does is that all of a sudden peaks out the demand, you know, and we've had problems where everybody's email all of a sudden slowed down because, you know, there was a burst of, of, of messages going out. So, I mean, you just, you, it's hard to manage that, that minute-by-minute demand. It's like you have with, with the power system during a hot summer day and that kind of stuff. You know, we don't have the ability to go out and shed load kind of thing. So we're trying to make sure we've got enough capacity for most demand for the city.
Other questions or thoughts?
Just to, just, how do you test the fact that you're, that yet your, your upgrade, or your redundancy is up to date? How do you test that? And the reason why I say that is because we, we had a, a, a problem with our AS400 one time, and it, you know, we were doing backups, and we had off-site, you know, took, somebody took the backups home, and we'd, we'd alternate so that, you know, if there was a fire, it wouldn't destroy our backup too. But when we, when we, when we did have a problem, we brought the backup in, and we found out it, it wasn't as good as we'd hoped it was, and so we, we, we couldn't really operate currently. We had to go back further, you know, to win the last. So how do you test? You know, here, we thought we were, we were fat, dumb, and happy. We thought we were backing up, doing everything properly, and it turns out, really, we never tested our backup in case, you know, to, to find out, could we operate? How do you do that?
So there's several different methods, and, and it's a discipline, basically. So we do that off-hours. We move production environment from one data center to another data center. And most of the time, there's no problem with that. When the problem occurs, when users come in and hit the other system, and the system is not sized correctly, so all of a sudden, something is slow, and we hear some, some complaints. There are quick adjustments on, basically on the fly. We, we try to move from one data center to another on a regular basis, I would say. I don't remember if it's on a quarter basis or every six months, but we move from one data center to another data center. Our users usually don't see the difference. When we, we conduct backup and we need users to leave the system, it's done after hours. So it's the least impact on our services. And we still communicate, because there are some employees that like to stay after hours and finish their work. So it's all coordinated with our users, and we do that on a regular basis.
So and how, how are you going to test the fact, how are you going to test your new system in Cary? So that it, you know that you have, you know, full capa, may not be full capability, but, but.
First of all, this is not going to be a new system. That system is currently installed in our server room. We're going to take that system, move it to Cary, so we know it works. Second is, how do you test disaster recovery? You actually have to conduct it. From time to time, you have to conduct.
I was wondering if you were going to actually have a test where you say, we've got a disaster, and pretend it's a, you've got to be up and running.
We actually had recently replaced the, a switch, electrical switch on our generator, and we basically tested our disaster recovery ability. We had several days to do that. We came here on the weekend and make sure that the production environment from the other data center in Public Safety Complex is fully operational. And you just have to, you just have to try it. There's no other way than trying it. And it's not only trying it off-hours, but actually putting it in production and having users use that other backup system from time to time. So if we would have, let's say, HDE in the cloud, we would work with, you know, our main users, whether it's a finance department permitting, and we would actually say, hey, they such and such, we would like you to switch, try the other system. And we would switch them for half a day, for a day, for a week, and see if they experience any, anything that's not working. Having the ability to switch back if the system is not performing as it's supposed to. And we can make those adjustments.
Given the fact that some of our operations are 24/7, police, fire, whatever else, are, is the IT center at 24/7 operation too? Is it manned around the clock?
Not manned. The, the center operates 24/7. We have certain monitoring, and we have an IT person on call.
That's correct.
You know, after hours, that has the ability to, you know, at least go in and see what the system's doing and call in whoever we might need. Another thing, just to supplement the talking about data, you know, the software systems that are operating some of our, you know, behind-the-scenes to coordinate the actual data, storage, and the operation of the computers, we've just improved, we've just gone to a different system. Of my, of, that operates the servers and the immediate storage. And, and they're much more dynamic between the two halves. You know, it's a little bit, it'll be a little bit different with the, the recovery site. But you're saying, we've had that same type of problem with our AS400 data, where when the system went down and the other system wasn't totally up to date, we've had to recreate some of that day's worth of activity in that. Some of the new software that we've installed does a better job of, of keeping the data updated on both, in both data centers.
That is correct. And, you know, you, you brought up a very interesting point. What if there's operation that's 24/7, cannot have any time down? We have two pieces of equipment for every single system. So it would take two identical failures to take the system down. If, if, if one piece of equipment fails at Public Safety, automatically, they're, the one here in the City Hall would pick up and provide the same service. City IT staff.
Invisible transition?
Correct. Without interruption to our users. And I don't.
That new software gives us that kind of capability.
And I would like to have chief reassure you that in the last several years, we didn't have any, any hiccups on our 911 system. Chief will say that his copier didn't work, but.
I've heard that story. Did he ever get his copier?
He got a brand-new copier, and I don't know the, the new relationship that it's.
Never seen a chief of police cry so violently for get a copier.
All the way up to Kingston and back.
Mr. Warden, the, the way we look at the system is just like having our generators. If you never exercise the generator, you're not managing it well, and when you actually need it, it could fail. So in all of our fire, all of our buildings that have generators, we have regular exercise programs, meaning that we turn the generator on, we throw the switch, turn off the power from the electrical company, and we force the generator to work. That's the same thing we're going to have to do here. We're going to have to have protocols that make sure that when we need it, it's there. And the only way you know that is to actually operate them.
We do regular 911 tests, where actually staff will come into ITS conference room, and we'll take 911 calls from, from here. They're part of the compliance that, that we do.
Any other questions? We'll keep you updated, and Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to Jacksonville Tourism Development, quarter year-to-date, Mr. Hargit.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to have you. We're going to do yours first.
I have no idea.
Okay.
I mean, you're the one who loaded the program, so. Let's move forward to yours, please, and we'll come back to you. Thank you.
That's all right. Want to just start with a little bit of background on tax collections and things such as that. And as you can see there, basically, over the same time period from before, we're up 4% in our collections from that. You'll also see from this that, over the timeline of what we have is a two-year trend line from the county comparison for the same time. That's the entirety subtracted out, the hotels that are not there. We're up 8%. That's a reference back to 2009, just to give you a reference as it is. Here it is grafted over time. You can see what the trend is. Obviously, December, January is a lower collection time or occupancy use time as it is. And remember, we're at three months right now, because the, the, the facilities have until the 20th of the month to pay for the previous month's collection, as it was. Now, for year-to-date collections compared to other times, we're showing a nice trend there of upward over the time. And so this trend, we hope, will continue through the end of the year. We're hearing that. One of the points that some of you heard from our, our look-backs that we had from some outside people as to what we are doing, we were actually seeing a little bit of cannibalization among the hotels, particularly when we had the new facilities of rates to try to draw stays to those facilities. And so the rack rate that you are, and the actual rate that were charged to some facilities went down. We're now seeing those rates go back up, which some go, that's bad. Well, yes, but it helps produce more tax too, so. Oh my, this one just died on me, but the, the blue, big blue there was, was to show, basically, that the significant amount is Western Boulevard. And one of the things that you might be, know is, when they pay fines and forfeitures and those type of things, that doesn't benefit us. All that money goes to the school board, and so we've paid about $40,000 to the school board from the penalties interest and so.
In other words, late payment or non-payment and so forth, okay.
That's correct. So now, let's talk about how we make things happen. And one of the key points that we want to talk about is that we believe strongly that sports is one of our ma, major activities, as it was. And with us this evening is M. Scott Smith, our new executive director for the Jacksonville Alonso Sports Commission. And Scott, just mention, if you would, quickly, what is the economic impact of sport to, to our community as such?
So over the last year, it was a little over 4.1 million. And looking back at the last 10 years from the Sports Commission's reports, it'd be over 15 million. So it's really had an uptick in the last five years, however. Obviously, as the, the staff and the board has gotten more intelligent on what events to go after and how to grow those events. So we're definitely on, on an upswing for sports-related economic impact.
Thank you, sir. He's going to be leaving us in a moment to go to the Sports Hall of Fame meeting, which has to get planning started now. Toward the end of those sports events, though, we've talked to you before, and you've seen some of the results of the Grand Prix series. And again, these are, these are operated by Marine Corps Community Services, but they are not allowed to advertise these outside. So our advertising brings people in. That's where we target our advertising, is not local, it's out-of-town advertising. We also, though, hosted them here at City Hall for their, for the packet pickup for the Marine Corps Half Marathon, and it was a great success. The thing that always amazes me is how much people who come want to have their photo made with a real-life Marine. So there they are in their Delta Blues, having that. You know, we live among these heroes every day. We don't think of that, but they were constantly lining up to have a picture made with the Marine. This is the only Marine Corps, this is the only half marathon run entirely aboard a military installation. And obviously, Dr. Woodruff has talked to you about the Hero Mile and how proud we are of that and the significant impact that has had to telling the story of what these heroes do every day and the sacrifices they can make. And we also found that this is a significant point, and you'll hear us talk, this, this, this race is on the bucket list of many people. And then to have a uniformed Marine put that medal around your neck, you know, brings that home. And that's why we're seeing the repeats and the affinity to come and make this part of your bucket list, is the matter. Now, with the Sports Commission, we challenged them this year to come up with three new events every year for the next, for a total of, of three years, three events each year. And the first one that they have done that's related to water was a New River Splash. And we did that on the same day that the Marine Corps Half Marathon was on, hoping that we can build people to sustain their stay, to be a part of some event that same weekend as it was. And it's inaugural event. It was a small, little event that day. Councilman Thomas, a member of the TDA, was also there that day. But we saw some interest, and we saw some things that were successful, and we saw some things that we're going to build on and do something, and planning has already began to that. Similarly, with the Remembrance Run, this is run at Camp Johnson. Originally, it was the Beirut Memorial Run, as many of you might remember. And now this run is totally dedicated as a Remembrance Run. And this was the first year they ran through the garden. Again, we put out the Hero Mile, and we're making this race. Now, the significant thing about this, these are two races of the Grand Prix series. There's five in all. 61% of the people that have thus far participated come from out of the county. 56% traveled more than 100, 201 miles, which is our, that's the drive that we think most people will make a decision to stay in a hotel if they're driving that type of distance as it was. We've already counted 804 room nights. That's empirical counts, not, you know, surveyed counts, as it was. And 87% indicate they want to come back. They want to renew this experience that they had. The most mentioned thing in all of the surveys that we did send to them was about the Heroes' Mile. 1,300 people in the Marine Corps Half Marathon, 600 in the, in the Remembrance Run so far. Oktoberfest, just this past weekend, as it was there, Chamber of Commerce weather, music that sounded German, and food that looked German and was there. And one of the things that was the advice in council to do was definitely to talk about that you had to emphasize the beer, you had to emphasize the German. It had to be authentic, as it was there, to go forward there. They believe that they're over, they've extended some of the activities to try to drive overnight stays, starting off with a beer tasting from the Craft Beer at the Carolina Ale House. And of course, our advertising is pushed out, not internal. And then they had the run Friday evening and Saturday, of course, the festival itself. They think there was 9,500 people that attended over those three days, and there were some overnight stays. This is an area that's, we're constantly looking to improve the overnight stays. Charity Ball, known as the Potentate's Ball and such there. This one is just a phenomenal success, and they, 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 they really have a good time. And Kim Tillman attended and took these pictures for us at the meeting there and was indicating they're well-fed and well-taken care of. So during this time, and it's $50 for them to attend. It's quite a bargain for a three-day weekend for activities that were there. They had 670 paying guests as part of this. The 300-room nights was the minimum. They, the surveys are still being. They, the surveys are still being conducted from this as part of it. There is room to grow this, but they're gonna outgrow the, the American Legion Building here quickly. They just, you know, when you get 670 people in there and dancing and the events, that's, you know, that's really starting to push that-
That's our biggest building, too.
That's, we don't go, yeah. Fashion Week, this was a renewal of an effort there for some people that had been associated before with some successful fashion weeks that had operated without our funding, and we brought them back in. And this, this was, this was a great phenomenon, a, a, a proposal. This was a great operation that occurred. And they have exceeded the capacity. They moved it to the Hilton Garden Inn this year, and they have hit the wall over there, too. They can only take a few more rooms. Basically, you'll see here from the moat, they had planned on 160, they got 220, they packed in there, 200 for Saturday, they seated 330 in that room. You know, it's, the Fire Marshal obviously didn't get by there that fast, but it was, you know, there. And they had 75-room nights that they've confirmed thus far. This is, this is one that has a great potential, but again, we're gonna have some space issues on that, as it was. Now, we mentioned to you previously when we appeared before you about the strategic initiative efforts. These are things that we're doing specifically to drive overnight stays into the future. Obviously, here's the deal, the telling the stories, the reunions, the tours, the sports development, the activities that they're doing with adding events, and we want to enhance that visitor experience so they come back and be a part of this community. Telling our story is an important part. We have seen the impact. Not only are we proud of what's happened with the Monford Point and that glorious memorial that's been built there, but telling that story that they're still seeking people whose parents, family members, someone might have been a Monford Pointer. They still want to find those. They think there's a significant number unidentified at this time. So continuing to tell that story through the observance, through the messaging that's being done there is something that we're doing. Giving the evidence of what it is that we do, we know is driving overnight stays, and we know that it's creating visitation and cultural heritage visitation that we have not been able to get before in the city as it is. Now, the campaign to push this out, we went for places that are not traditional to us dealing with, and our specialized consultants helped us push this into there and made things happen, as it was. We think now that we've had it reached of over 170,000, or about 170,000 readers as this part, and some 19,000 social shares that have come as a result of it. Stories that were pushed out, as it was, through some, some, you know, unique placements in social media and in print. And we, we hit some particularly for that. Now, here's travelpulse.com. No controversy over these statues, as it was. That, that picture, that was picked up and repeated many times, and we got a lot of benefit from it. We particularly targeted Florida area because of the number of Monford Pointers that haven't been identified from that state. And this, the Orlando Sentinel has been pushed out, and we've got some other activities that are being pushed into the Florida area to try to bring them up and make a part of it. All of us know about the value of military reunions. Since we last appeared before you, we've had the trip down there to Columbus, Georgia, and our overview was simple. We can do this. It's not gonna be a limit of the size of some of the facilities that we have in this case, because we won't get those big ones anyway. We're gonna get the average size, it's generally at 80 to 100. We can handle that. That's within the range of what we can do. So we've contracted with a chamber, they're helping to manage this effort for us, and they, one of the things that we were told so specifically was, they have to be managed. You have to have someone there with them. You've got to make sure that they check in on the matter. And so these guys that come back for these reunions, they want to have, share their experiences, they gotta have a place to tell their stories, and they've got to have hospitality. And one of the things that's key to this, it's not just, down there, we made an assumption that it was Army people going back to Fort Benning because that's what they wanted to. Absolutely not. The majority of their reunions are Navy, Marine Corps, and Air Force and such there because they want to meet every year. They don't want to go back to the same place every year. So when you get on the circuit, you can, you can be in, in line, and that's what we want to do. So we went down there to Columbus, Georgia, because without a doubt, they had the reputation for doing this the best of anybody in the United States. And so we wanted to see how they did it, and we've learned. A couple key part was, it was that customer service, that you have to have that customer service to them, as it was. They had a four-member staff that does nothing but deal with military reunions. They're getting that many. Some 300 events a year they're getting out of there. As said, some very small 40, some, you know, 1,500. So that's, that's a good number there, as it was. But one of the keys is we have to make presentations to these military reunion groups. It's a very closed group, and so we're, we're, Columbus, Georgia's helping us get into that group, and we're very happy about that, as it was there. The impact of the Military Museum there definitely adds to this. And it's a glorious facility. It is a tribute to the infantry. This is some of the interior space that's available that they rent out. Now, they have more than 370 events alone at the museum every year, and that's a key moneymaker for them, as it was. Enhancing the visitor experience is telling people that you welcome them and that you have something for them to see and that perhaps you can give them a tour. That's what we're seeking volunteers for now. We're working on having our tour of the Lejeune Memorial Gardens, working through that, as it was. And at these events, they'll be there to help show people around and do things for them, as it was. So the other items that we're working on is that we'll have some people come in to visit, these bloggers and such, they'll be coming here in the spring. The Visit North Carolina, that's, you know, visitnc.com is the website. They're coming here. We've got two events that's gonna be with them. We're having to upgrade our visitjacksonvillenc.com website, where we're being more responsive to what it is that visitors want, travelers want to see in that ray. Those specialized placements that I mentioned to you about seeking out the Monford Point, looking for other military connections that we can make and enhance that would drive overnight stays here. Obviously, the additional sporting events that Scott and his, his crowds working on, I mentioned to you tours, and of course, partnerships with others that are important to talk about with the Sports Commission and others that we have. Here are some of the events that the TDA is working on now that are upcoming. Obviously, Winterfest is part of the city's effort, and we're trying to drive overnight tourism there with cookie contests and things such as that that would, you know, drive people from around the area. We have Jazz in the City on February 4th. February 10th, the Extreme Endurance Challenge, all of you are welcome to go get muddy and dirty. And on February 17th, one might say, "Why would outer towners come for a bridal expo?" This is a unique deal. This one drives future sales. Last year, they can't, they booked $67,000 worth of future sales at facilities here in Jacksonville at that event. So this brings would-be brides to come here, they see the venues, they do the stuff, and they book the crews, the business, the things such as that. So the hotelers will definitely tell you that, as it was. In closing, I want to mention to you about the, we are sad to say that we had Melody York, our longest-serving member of the, of that was a hotel person. She has resigned, she's leaving the area as it was there, but she was extraordinarily beneficial, and I want to give some shout-out to the fact about how helpful she was when we were setting this up. When Gail Maes and her staff and all of us had to get into the business of collecting tax and going through all that, she was extraordinarily helpful for that situation. We did adopt a new budget. Mr. Thomas was part of that, based on the FLYP legislation, and we did draw from the reserve that the city had, that the TDA has, not spent in promotion money to, to make that happen, as it was there. And we did make some changes in the capital expenses. Added to it was the Zing Zoom Museum. I can't say that fast enough.
Say that three times.
Yeah, not gonna happen. The Monford Point, just on the capital matters, the Monford Point Phase II, we're still working on getting some of the licensing matters and some of the other procedures going through. The Corbin Memorial, we've recently met with them. This is what their memorial is gonna look like, and it, it is ready. They are getting ready to give the contract to Abby Godwin, the same woman that did the statue at the Beirut Memorial, and she will be casting this in bronze, and that'll be available for us soon. And of course, the Zing Zoom Children's Museum, they've signed their documents, and we've had our first meeting, and we're now waiting to meet in with the, with the procedures of what to happen next with them on the matter. And of course, future matters, we've got to maintain this pace with the current strategies. It's, it's, it's a lot to deal with, you know, these many balls. The Visitor Center out there is a, is a, something to be considered. The multipurpose sports facility obviously has been something the TDA has advanced to. The reunions is something that we are continuing to work on, the, we've got several now scheduled and on the books for that. We are also learning that one of the newest trends in travel tourism is people who want unique experiences. And so we're putting together itineraries that would give them 96 hours in Jacksonville, and what they could do, and how they could do that. And military-related trips, as it was, and of course, sports. That is, that's something that we can grow and that we can do, and that's Scott's full-time job to advance that. So thank you for letting me make this report to you.
Very good. Questions?
Would you mind if we took a 10-minute break and then started back up?
Okay. We're in reg, we're close.
Okay, we're back in session.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this evening we'd like to talk to you a few minutes about recruitment and turnover in the police department and generally in the city. If you'll recall, about six weeks ago, the chief informed me that he had had a number of personnel resign to go to work for other agencies. This is a trend that we have had now for several years. We thought it would be appropriate this evening to give you an update on actually the impact and the level of turnover that we're actually seeing. What we'd like to do tonight is walk you through some statistics and then some conversation. Generally, the police department budget's $18 million, and you can see from the sworn officer and civilian how many people we have. Generally, the key numbers we want to focus on, though, are the full-time sworn personnel. We obviously have a chain of command, everybody from Mike as the director down to trainees. The group that we're focusing on, though, are the lieutenants, sergeants, corporals, police officer twos, and police officer ones. That's about 100 of your personnel. That's the area that we need to focus on, and that's the area that we are seeing that people are recruiting away from the city of Jacksonville. Let's talk about recruitment, first of all. In order for a person to become a police officer, they have to be 21 years of age. They have to go through something called BLAT. Now, BLAT is basic law enforcement training. That's a state requirement. Mike, it's probably a national requirement, isn't it?
Most states have some type of certification program.
Now, the BLAT program here is offered where?
We do that at Coastal Carolina Community College. It's about between 600 and 700 hours.
And how often are those classes offered?
We have one spring class and one fall class.
Okay, and generally, how many people are in each class?
They average between 20 and 30 in each class.
And the people who graduate from there, are they actually ready just to go out and be police officers?
No, they're not. What we do after they finish that course is they go through a three-month field training program where they're assigned to another officer for that three-month period.
And that's why when you see PTO, that is not personal time off.
Or parent-teacher organization.
But that's a good one, too. But it is internal training. Now, the other alphabet soup that you see there, Mike, stands for what?
The CIT, which is the critical incident training that we do. SFST, which is field sobriety training, and then radar training. All those are trainings that we require basic officers to complete.
When you look at the question, why do we recruit? The answer is, we have turnover and we have vacancies. And that's true of every position. We have 556 budgeted positions. They go everything from the folks who take care of our landscaping, to the people who put out the fires, to the people who answer EMS, to the people who give water billing, to obviously police. On the surface, you would say, well, for the police department, things look actually pretty rosy. In a typical year, we get 600 to 800 applicants. That's a lot.
Just for the police?
Yes, but look at the next line. The vast majority don't even begin to meet the background checks, and they're not certified. So when you take, you know, the vacancies that we're having, and you say 90% to 95% of the applicants can't get through the process for various reasons, it doesn't really leave us a large pool. That's not a pool that we are the only ones working in. It's the same pool that the sheriff's department works in, that SBI works in, that Holly Ridge, Wilmington, New Bern, they're all working basically in the same regional pool. When you actually look at turnover for the last three years, now remember, we have 123 sworn officers. You look at that and you see, in 2015, we had 10% turnover, 15 people. In '16, we had 15% turnover, or 17 people. And so far, this calendar year, not fiscal year, we've had 10 people. That doesn't sound like a lot, but let's look at the numbers. Why do people leave us? Well, you can see, a lot of people watch TV and think, man, that looks like a fun job. But they get into it and they realize policing's not for me. Shift work, military transfers, hired by other agencies, retirements, morale, other medical, whatever it may be, people leave us. If you look at citywide turnover, the numbers are really not that different from what you see with the police department. Now, these numbers do not include the police department. These include every other department, all funds. So you can see that out of the, what I'm going to say is roughly 430 people who aren't in the police department, we have a 9% to 12% turnover every year. And again, why do people leave us? The same reasons they leave the police department. They decide that they want a career change. They don't like the shift work that we have in some of our areas. Military transfers, we have a very, we have a very nice young lady who is working down in finance for Gail, whose husband's in the military. They now are transferring to Hawaii. And we're fortunate. We are very proud of the fact that Kimberly and the whole staff work hard to hire the exiting military or hire the spouses of existing military. But what that means is people do leave us. They're here for two years, three years, they move on. We have a young lady in finance who's back with us for Gail the second time.
The third time.
The third time. Because she was with us, they got transferred, they came back, she's working with us, got transferred, and so forth. Hired by others happens across the board. Retirements happen across the board. And morale, a lot of people just simply don't like their work environment, or they don't like their supervisor, or, or, or. So the causes of turnover in JPD, those are the same causes for turnover in the general city. But, what's the but, right here? When we lose somebody in the general workforce, we can fill that position in 30 to 60 days. HR does a great job, human resources, does a great job of advertising, screening, getting applications in, and filling that position. And within 16 weeks, and most of the time much more, much quicker, we have that position filled and up and running. So for example, we have a young lady downstairs who leaves us in our water billing. We hire, they're on the front desk down there, they're trained, and in 12 to 16 weeks, they're fully operational handling customers. That's a different timeline with JPD. JPD is not 16 weeks. It's anywhere from 20 to 44 weeks. Why is that? Well, I got the wrong slide, so I'll come back to why is that in just a second. Let's look at the impact of the JPD turnover. Mike, walk us through some of these.
Well, we're short-staffed. We average about 10 vacancies per year, and for those entire months. So that makes us short-staffed, especially in the patrol division. And we've seen an increase, 3.6% last year, where you answer about 137,000 calls for service. And in doing this research, even looking at comparing us to the sheriff's department, they answered about 48,000 calls for service. So we're answering a lot more calls, and with short-staffed, it's sometimes difficult for officers to get off. It's sometimes difficult to get officers trained. We have to increase overtime because they have to spend more time doing those things. And we lose the training investment. You know, we talk about, you know, those basic things that we do, the CIT training, the SFST training, the radar training, but that's just the basic. You know, when we get into some of our more specialized skills, like the DARE training officers, you know, they'll spend several weeks going to DARE training. We lost polygraph examiners to other agencies. You know, that's a $15,000 investment for us. And we talk about the SWAT team, we talk about special investigative skills, all those are loss of training investments when they're recruited by other agencies. And the morale in the department does sometimes get affected because officers are having to work extra shifts and cover extra areas. When we talk about our holiday task force and trying to get that, that costs us a tremendous amount of overtime because of our short-staffed. And then we lose some professional experience. You know, it takes a, it takes an officer, even though it takes us about 44 weeks to get an officer trained and on the road, it takes them really at least another year or two before they really become comfortable with the job. Because the job is so diverse, and there's so, there's so many aspects of it, it takes them some time. So when we lose an officer that has two to three years' experience, then we lose that professional experience that we have tried to cultivate in our officers. And then response times increase. As we start to lose officers and we work short-staffed, our response time is not as effective as we'd like it to be.
Here's the timeline for filling a vacancy. Unlike a typical job with the city, and we do background checks on everybody, but the background checks for policemen is a very different background check than for a regular employee. The screening can take anywhere up to 10 weeks, because they do go back, and it's an exhaustive background check. They go through the 17 weeks of BLAT, I'm sorry, BLET. They have the internal training Mike talked about. They have the specialized training. So you can see, if we're lucky, we may have someone who's transferring in here with the military, and their spouse has already been a police officer. That happens very seldomly, very seldomly. So that's why we put down 20 to 44 weeks. If a person's already been through BLAT, and they've already been a professional police officer, pick a number, for five or six years, some other place, boy, we're lucky. The reality, though, is that's not the typical new hire. The typical new hire is 44 weeks. What's the cost of turnover? It's expensive. It's expensive.
And I might add that, you know, two years ago, we would hire from the classes, the BLAT classes, but because of a number of reasons, what we've had to do now is we've had to sponsor those persons, so we've paid them to go to school, which is something we haven't done, we haven't done that much of in the past. And part of that is because of recruitment, part of that is because of the retention that we've seen over the last several years, the last two years in specifically.
JPD turnover due to recruitment by other agencies. Who do they go after? They don't go after the chief, thank goodness. They don't go after Tim, thank goodness. They certainly don't go after me, although I did think the other day, one of the policemen was after me, but that was someone else they were after, thank goodness. Who do they go after? They go after our 100 people. They go after the core of our police department. The PO1s, twos, corporals, they go after our certified officers. Why do they go after them? Because they're ready to come to work. They've already been through BLAT, they've been through all this specialized training. They come after our bread and butter police officers. How do they recruit? Well, they say, we're going to pay you more. We're going to give you equal or better benefits. We're not going to have the shift work that JPD has. And guess what? And many times, our workload is, now, I'm talking about the recruiting people, our workload isn't nearly what you face at JPD. Think of it this way. If you had the opportunity to work in Jacksonville versus working in New York as a police officer for the same pay, okay? There are agencies who come to our folks and say, we can pay you more, you don't have to work as hard, you don't have nearly as many calls of service, life is going to be great, come to work with us. That's what we're seeing. Who do we see it from? Here's who we see it from. In the last two years, we have lost 11 officers to Anzo County. We have lost 16 officers to other police agencies. Some of those are shown here. This is not the only reason people are leaving us, wages. People do leave for other reasons. But from a recruitment strategy, the strategy they are using is money. A police officer one, when they start, when they have gotten certified, they've been through the 13 weeks of on the field and all that, we're paying them roughly $35,000. The sheriff's department is paying them $40,000. Holly Ridge is paying $1,000 more than we're paying. SBI, which those initials stand for?
State Bureau of Investigation.
Is $41,000. And the DMV, that stands for?
The Department of Motor Vehicles Theft Division.
And that's $39,000. If you look at those jobs, and you go back to the strategy question of what did they use for strategy, pay benefits, shift work, and workload? Here's another statistic having to do with our trainees and sworn officers. Mike?
The trainee pay is what we pay an officer while they're going through the BLAT program. So if you compare that to the sheriff's office, they're paying them $39,000. So when we go to recruit, I mean, even that becomes a challenge. And what we used to do is we, or what we try to do is, is when we're having a, because most of the instructors in the BLAT program are our officers, what we try to do is we recruit them in the class. But we're having a much more difficult time actually recruiting them in the class because of the difference in pay. Because we'll pay them $33,000, and the sheriff will pay them $39,000, so they're more likely to look and say, you know, which is making it more difficult for us to even recruit in those classes. And that's why, over the last two years, that we've sponsored five or six people to go to the BLAT program that have no law enforcement experience versus hiring them that are already interested in the class or had recently completed the BLAT program. So it's been, on the recruitment side and the retention side, it's kind of affected us in two different ways.
Let's talk about moving forward, because we're not here tonight to give you solutions. We're here tonight to give you what I'll call education on the problem that we're facing. It's not a problem that's going to go away. And what we're going to have to do, the manager's office, HR, and JPD are going to be working to bring you additional data. We are studying our wage options to determine what can we do. Because whatever we do, it is going to cost money, and we have to figure out where do we get that money. We're also surveying the staff of JPD. You know, when you're, it's one thing to be on the outside thinking you know what the problems are. If you're on the inside, you have a different view of those problems. So we're asking the staff of the police department to give us feedback on what do they see that will help us have longer retention and help us address some of the other issues. For example, on shift work, right now, you work, what are your shifts?
We work 12-hour shifts. And we've been discussing, and they're rotating shifts, so they work two weeks, rotate, two weeks, rotate, two weeks, rotate. So we've been in discussions about what can be a better shift, whether it could be permanent shifts. Some agencies do have permanent shifts where they work a permanent night shift, or a permanent evenings, or permanent days. Or do we need to change the rotation? Or do we need to change the shift altogether? Do we need to move from a 12-hour shift to a 10-hour shift to an eight-hour shift? Or have a combination of those three to try to make sure that we have the right coverage, but make it easier on some of the officers? Because, you know, when you work a 12-hour shift during the night shift, it can be, it can be a really long night. It might not be as long if you're working a 12-hour day shift. Well, because of the person's biological clock, it is. Graveyard shift or midnight shift is, takes more toll on someone's body, especially if they're transferring from one shift to another. So how can we minimize that? And those are things that we are actively talking about right now to see if we can, we've had this discussion, I don't know, probably over the last 10 years numerous times, and, you know, it goes back to how many days you, how many days you have off, weekends off, and those kinds of things, and how we work that shift schedule. But we're, again, looking at that as one of the options.
How does the county shifts pattern work?
The county shifts work very similar to us.
12 hours?
12 hours. But a lot of the officers, yeah, they rotate, too.
That's not a factor. The workload's a factor, and the salary's a factor.
Well, in some of the agencies we're recruiting away, though, they don't work shift work.
SBI and DMV, those agencies don't have to work a shift work. But I think, I think we're looking at all those, all those things in form of, you know, what do we need to do to help retain those officers that are working for us now?
We don't believe that the only solution is money. We believe that that is one item that we need to study and see how we address it. But it's just like anything else in life. It doesn't, and you guys know that, you folks know I love to eat hot dogs. Well, it doesn't matter the price of the hot dog, there are other things. Is the bun good? Do they have condiments that are good? Does the meat itself taste good? Now, to me, any hot dog tastes good. Point I'm making, though, is when you look at something like the police department turnover, it's not about looking at one element. It's looking at a whole series of elements. And that's what Mike and Tim and the leadership in the police department, with the assistance of Kimberly and HR, we're looking at, as of Kimberly and HR, we're looking at as many elements as we possibly can. Because just the fact that you may pay more doesn't mean that you are going to stop the turnover if there are other issues that are causing it. So what we wanted to do tonight was give you an update. We hope that in December or January, we're gonna report back to council with more specifics, including financial implications and how we're gonna cover those implications. By that time, we will have survey data in from the sworn officers of the police department. So we'll be able to analyze some of their concerns, too. But this is our program. We welcome any thoughts or input that y'all have tonight, any questions you have, or as we move forward.
But in terms of competition, I would suspect that we're competing primarily with the sheriff's department. There are probably not that many openings in DMV compared to the sheriff's department.
Well, and actually, I think the reason that we've had so many go to the SBI and the DMV was during the lull in the economy, what happened was the state didn't hire any. So the state is behind. And this is not a, this issue is not something that's unique to Jacksonville. It's unique to, you know, I talked to the chief in Concord just the other day, and he has the same issues of recruiting and retention. Because people aren't going into police work. I remember when I went to test for the Kingsport Police Department, which is the town next to Bristol.
Was that in Tennessee or Virginia?
Tennessee.
Okay, just checking.
When I was fresh out of college, there were three hundred and fifty people to test for one position. Well, that doesn't happen anymore. We don't have, we don't, and, you know, I was talking to a captain from Charlotte yesterday. They have two hundred and fifty openings that they cannot fill. I was talking to the chief in Winston-Salem, they have fifty openings. So part of it is nationwide, people are not going into police work as they were thirty or forty years ago.
In closing, Tim, any observations you want to share?
The survey's gonna be very interesting to let us know where we stand as far as the components, what is actually the driving force of people leaving. You know, one of the things that we think about, too, is the generational differences that the new employees we have coming in, they're looking for more money, they have families, they have young families. And they're looking, they're hungry for different things. It could be pay, it could be where they want to live in the country, it could be education. So there's different things. And a lot of them, we're finding, don't like shift work. People want to work daytime hours, they don't want to be out. Because those rotating shifts, believe it or not, they do take a toll on you. Because imagine you work, you work two days one week, midnight, so then you work five days the next week, and you're off Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then Monday, you come right back in a day shift. And the same thing happens in two weeks, you're right back on the night shift again. So your body never really gets to acclimate. And it's difficult. And they get here for a year or two and they go, "You know what? This really isn't for me." And they look for other options. So it's, I've been here for twenty-nine years and eight months now, and it's been this way the day I walked in the door. It has, it's always been this way. And we always had more applicants, it seems, back in the nineties and early two thousands, but they've dwindled, they have dwindled. And we have a very strict hiring process. Sometimes you get some really good people, and then they get to the door and they have one part of their life that they can't be a police officer, whether it's a...
Is that our criteria, or is that just a standard?
That's across the board.
Yeah, but some of it is our criteria, but some of it is state standard.
State standard, you can't ignore, or you can't relax at all.
Yeah, like, for example, there's certain misdemeanors or certain crimes that they can't, drug use, you know, when we talk about, when we talk about drug use. And, you know, the ethical part of it, a lot of times, it surprises me. A lot of times, what happens is we'll get through the process and we'll find out that the person wasn't truthful on their application, or wasn't truthful about some of the questions we asked.
Like the credit score, could that knock them out, too? That kind of thing?
Typically, the credit score would not knock them out. But, you know, those ethical issues would, because, I mean, we have to have absolute trust in the officers. Because there's a number of issues that relate to court testimony and, you know, Mr. Carter and I have been through that several times about subpoenaing files and in criminal cases. So, you know, I'm not sure that we would relax our standard now, because I think it's extremely important, especially in this time and day, to find the right folks. You know, and our concentration has been that, over the last ten years, has been that community policing, that community interaction officer that we look for. And that takes us a little bit more time than, you know, some departments hire somebody in three or four days, but, I mean, we are very meticulous about hiring the right person. Because when you give them a badge and a gun and they're taking people's freedom, we want to make sure we get the right folks in those positions.
But also remember, recruiting is only half, it's retention. If what we're doing, and I think the statistics show, if what we're doing is we're becoming the training ground for others to cherry pick the best, then we've got to find a way to stop that. We need to focus on better recruitment, but we also have to work on retention. So we'll bring you more data on this. Any closing comments, gentlemen?
And I would mention, one thing I would mention is that, you know, because we become short-staffed, we don't train them, we don't send them to the specialized training, which is one reason that they look to maybe the SBI or the DMV or some other organization. I mean, it would be nice if we were full-staffed and we could send them to training, because I think that shows, I think they enjoy that and they learn a lot. So, I mean, that's been, I mean, I remember a young officer, we have a lunch where we sit down and talk with staff once a month, and, you know, the officer was adamant, "Look, you know, I really want to go to these schools, but I can't go because I don't want to leave my shift short." And I see that and I hear that, and I realize that, you know, that keeping us full-staffed gives us the ability to let those officers grow the way they need to grow. And I think that's an important part of retention, because if they're learning about different skills, whether it's evidence processing, whether it's homicide investigation, whether it's traffic, whether it's whatever it is, I think that helps us retain those officers, too. And the short staff has prevented us from doing as much as we'd like to over the last several years.
Any other questions or thoughts you have? Good job, man. The last thing we'd like to cover quickly has to do with the mental health and substance abuse facility. You will recall that in February of two thousand seventeen, in a joint session with the county commission, there were two city council members who were asked to be on the task force, that's Mr. Lozera and Mr. Thomas. There were also two county commissioners, and that's Mr. Knapp and Mr. Price. What we'd like to do tonight is, and I'd like to have Mr. Thomas to also fill in as he feels appropriate, we'd like to give you an overview of the interlocal agreement where we are at this point. It's about mental health and substance abuse. The interlocal agreement is to establish partnerships, financial commitments, and the advisory committee. Let's look at those. Who are the partners? Well, it started off the city of Jacksonville, Anzlo. Wasn't too many meetings in when Carteret County raised their hand and said, "Hey, we need to be part of this, too." So they have been attending, Commissioner Farrington? Yeah, Commissioner Farrington from Carteret County has been attending. And then we've had partners from Anzlo Memorial and Carteret Regional. Why are the hospitals partners? Well, the police department can tell you that these people don't just come to the police department and sit. They go to the emergency room. They wind up literally being in the ER for hours, sometimes days, and they wind up being in the hospital, because currently, there is no place in this community for mental health assistance, where you need overnight stay. So the hospitals, both counties, have stepped up to the plate and said, "We want to be financially part of this solution." The facility that's proposed is a facility that would be a short-term stay facility, overnight, up to seven days. It's a mental health care, it's a substance abuse center. It would use an existing county facility. It is just in the shadow of the Anzlo Memorial Hospital. It's a facility that the county ran for many years, and for various reasons, they quit running. But it is a sound facility. What we're proposing is to build sixteen beds, have it where you could stay up to seven days. Some of this would be what they call IVCs. Chief IVC stands for what?
Involuntary Commitments.
Involuntary Commitments. Others would be, I guess, VCs, voluntary commitments. But the point being, instead of coming to the hospital, what you would do is you would check into this facility. We were fortunate that Senator Brown was able to get out of the Dorothy Dick's Fund, and most of you, you've all been here longer than I have. You will recall that at one point, there was a mental health facility that was statewide. When that facility was sold, the revenue from that was put into a special state account. And that was for mental health facilities. So Senator Brown was able to get two million dollars to help us retrofit the existing two buildings. The county has hired Smith Senate. Smith Senate has given the task force a report recently. They're gonna be going out for bids in December, and they're gonna be putting in sprinkler systems, fixing new bathrooms, putting in air conditioning systems, basically retrofitting the buildings using the state money. So none of the local money is needed at this point, we don't believe, relative to the physical plant. Who's gonna operate it? Well, interestingly enough, the state of North Carolina is no longer in the mental health business, except through contracts. And the provider for this part, and I believe, Mike, it's twenty-three counties, Mr. Thomas, do you remember?
Twenty-six, maybe.
Okay, twenty-six counties have a contract that the state has issued through a company called Trillium. Trillium will give a subcontract to the people who are gonna operate this facility. So these won't be county employees, these won't be city employees, these will be professionals in private companies that will be under the supervision of a professional mental health company. Their contract will be with Trillium. Trillium's contract will be with our partnership group. The estimated operating budget for the sixteen-bed facility for a full year is not inexpensive. It's one point six million dollars annually. Many of the people who are there will come with insurance, such as Blue Cross Blue Shield or whatever. Some of the people will be Medicaid eligible. The vast majority of the people, though, fall through the cracks. They don't qualify for Medicaid, and they don't have private insurance. So locally, we're gonna have to find one point two million dollars. That's not a small piece of change. What we can tell you is that Carteret County is talking about five hundred thousand dollars a year. Both of the hospitals are talking about contributions. The county is talking about a contribution. And obviously, as a city, we need to be thinking about what our contribution may be. We should also remember, and I'm saying this in a polite way, that city taxpayers also pay county taxes. So when the county makes a contribution, there's a portion of that money that actually comes already from the city taxpayer. But at a point, probably roughly two weeks away, there'll be an interlocal agreement on your agenda, and that interlocal agreement will be asking you to pledge over a two-year period a certain amount of money. And y'all will have to decide what you're comfortable with that. One other aspect of the interlocal agreement is the oversight committee. The OCOC, as we call it, is the Anzlo-Carteret Oversight Committee. It is proposed to be made up of eight people. There is a specific list in the interlocal agreement, which you've been provided, that shows how that would be made up. Here's what it says. Two county commissioners from each county, two city council members, one Memorial Hospital member, and one Carteret general. We're not, as we have met with, as a task force, we have said, "We're not looking for general citizens to be on this." The reason why we're asking the elected officials to be on here is because you're being asked to put money in. It's real easy for somebody else to spend your money. But if the city and the county and the other county is gonna be involved, we felt it essential that the elected officials be there to determine the oversight requirements, to be the ones who are judging, is the money you're putting in being spent, is there actually a beneficial return that the community is seeing by putting this money forth? And so at a point in time, you will be asked to adopt an interlocal agreement. Mr. Thomas, you've served very well on this, you've attended, I think we've had seven meetings, you've been there for all of them. Any other comments we need to make at this point?
It's just, it's a very difficult, difficult issue to deal with, and I think that we're just trying to do the best we can to get professionals in charge of taking care of these folks, where there are so many times left with the ER or our police department that are just kind of, maybe for a better word, babysitting, you know, just kind of biding time. But we're hoping, I think, we're looking for something unique. I don't think we can go point at something that we've, somebody can say, "This is, you know, we need one of those." But, you know, we're doing, we're making the effort to try to improve a bad situation. And I think until we really get into it, we're really not gonna understand it. It's hard to understand, I mean...
Who would be running the day-to-day operation?
It would be the subcontract specialist that's hired by Trillium. Mr. Thomas, go ahead, please.
You know, they're sending out a request proposal to different providers, different type. Because Trillium, like I said, they're just a pass-through. They don't provide services. They contract with somebody else to provide the services. So it has been about as complex a thing as I've ever been involved in, because it's, to me, it defies the golden rule of business, that the man with the gold makes the rule. See, Trillium is really truly responsible from the state, because that's where they get their money. But yet, we're here, we want to make the rules. So we've got to kind of massage the situation so that everybody's comfortable with our oversight, and we're looking, you know, have chief and others have definite expectations of it. So it's gonna be probably a lot of surprises along the way, but we've got to go down the road, we got to try.
We also need to realize that creating a sixteen-bed facility is not gonna solve our mental health and substance abuse. You know, we will still have police officers who are babysitting, pardon the term, we will still have people in the ER room, because you're talking about a sixteen-bed facility. There will be days when...
It's already full.
It's already full. So where are they gonna be? And remember, we're opening this up also to Carteret County, because, you know, they're willing to put in some money, too. The one thing, though, that we are saying is, there is no set number of beds, that if you put in half the money, you get half the beds. No, it's on a first-come, first-served basis. So there may be days when all sixteen beds are occupied by people from Anzo County. There may be days when all sixteen beds are occupied by people from Carteret County. But we all know the nationwide problem that we have. And this is an attempt by you and your counterparts at the county, and Carteret County, to at least try to begin to address this.
Take me down the path for financing, we're being asked to contribute a share for the operating expense.
Correct.
But that's not personnel and so forth.
Oh, yes, it is.
It is.
Yeah. It's, the one point, let me go back a second to whatever slide that was. The one point six million is the full operating cost for everything from staff to janitorial services, to water bills, to medication.
And this is an estimate. Yeah, they hope. Until the requests or the proposals come back, we don't really know what the price tag will be.
And the money is funded through Trillium for Medicare or insurance?
Right, they have to go through them, because they administer all the Medicaid reimbursement... Right, they have to go through them, because they administer all the Medicaid reimbursements and other insurances. The county doesn't, obviously, nobody wants to get in that business where you've got to file insurance, that's right there.
Well, maybe I'm confused there. We're being asked to contribute, let's say 30% or 40% share. And Trillium is going to be running the show through a subcontractor. Who's going to be the day-to-day overseer of the operation there? I mean, this committee we're talking about, it sounds like a committee that's going to be distant from the day-to-day operation. Am I missing something?
No, actually, you're not. And that's one of the difficult things. We're creating a completely new pattern here that nobody has created that we've been able to find. And, and so here's what the situation is. The people who are actually operating the center will be a professional company that specializes in it.
Okay.
Their contract will be with Trillium.
Right.
Trillium's contract is then with Onslow County. Onslow County will have interlocal agreements with you, Carteret County, the hospitals, and that interlocal agreement says money and oversight. Now, the oversight committee, the task force that Mr. Thomas, Mr. Lozera, I think, have very diligently served on, they're the ones who are going to be setting up what we call the evaluation matrix.
Okay.
That matrix is going to have in it, how many repeat offenders, I'm sorry, that's the wrong word, how many people have experienced recidivism? This person was in here for seven days, we never saw him again. These 16 people were in there, and we saw them every month. They were there for seven days, the next month, they were there for seven more days. The reason why we're setting up the evaluation matrix is, if at the end of the day, you're spending $1.2 million and you're accomplishing something, that's fine. But if at the end of two years, you look at this and say, folks, it just, we're not accomplishing anything. We're not seeing that we're helping people. And at that point, you're going to have to make the decision, do you simply turn the funds off and close the facility? But I'll also say this to you. When you start down this road, this is a road that you will never get away from if it's successful. And I'm not saying that from a bad standpoint. I'm saying, because of the problem we have in this country and in this community, and it's not just this community, it's every community. You know, this is like deciding that you're going to start providing water service. Once you get into it, you're in it. But again, two weeks away, we're going to be asking y'all to, to think about how much of a contribution do you want to make? At this point, the interlocal agreement does have in it a number they're asking you to commit to. But as Mr. Thomas said, pardon the way I'm going to say this, we said to the county and to Trillium, now's not the time to be adopting interlocals, because you don't have any idea what the real cost is going to be.
Why do you, why do you, why do you put the cost down now? Doesn't make sense.
No, but Trillium has said, guys, if that's what you want, we're not going to send out the RFP. So we've kind of come to an intersection where we both are, you know, somebody's got to give. The point I'm making is, you won't really know the cost until the responses are in in February.
And then when it is in actual operation.
Yeah, and then, if they don't make, they're for profit, if they don't make money, then the next time the RFP goes out, they're going to, they'll want more, or somebody else will, or you bring some other new group in.
Or here's the other really bad thing that could happen, that nobody who's there has any insurance.
Right.
And nobody who's there has Medicaid. And suddenly, you're looking at not $1.2 million to make up, you're looking at $1.6 million. Now, believe me, I'm not saying this in an anti-way. I think this is something, as a community and as a city government, we need to address, and we need to be part of. But this is very different than most things that we're in, where we can give you a guaranteed price. And in this case, the checkbook is, is...
Left on the table.
And you're also, you're subject to, as this, as this is part of medical care, as medical care continues to escalate and increase, much more than inflation, much more than just about any other business that we're in, you know, we're going to, we're on the hook for those, that extra cost in the future, you know, unless we decide to just say...
I think one of the things I would recommend is that, you know, let's go ahead with the interlocal agreement, it shows good faith. But let's also require a meeting with the county commission and with all members of the, of the OCOC when we get the bids actually in. And before the county actually signs the final contract, we need to all sit around the table and make sure that we're all understanding the same facts and the same obligations. Is that a reasonable way to go, you think?
Yeah.
Well, we do have a big stake in the operation, if I recall. The chief, how many man-hours are we spending?
16,000.
How many?
16,000.
Annually? Wow.
And this may not, this may not put a dent in it.
That's correct.
But part of, one of the...
Well, I hope it puts something in it.
Yes. Come up to the table, Mike, if you don't mind.
One of the, one of the factors in that matrix is that if an officer takes somebody to that facility, they only have 15-minute turnaround.
Right.
So rather than waiting in the emergency room for several hours, there'll be 15 minutes, and they'll be back on the street to get, to prove that, or at least try to reduce it. I don't think it's going to reduce it that much, but at least that's, that's more than what we've got right now.
Yeah, and I want to make sure that, I know there was a person, I won't say who, who said, well, the city ought to put in a whole lot, because you're going to be able to save that money in the police office. And I said, no, no, no. The police, the cost of the police department is the same. It's the allocation of time. Where we're going to save is, instead of having 16 hours, 16,000 hours tied up, maybe we only have 14,000 hours. But we're not saving money, we're redirecting our resources to put them back out on the street. Any questions, or Mike, you want to add anything? You've attended all the meetings, too?
I think, you know, the important part about the funding, too, is the fact that the cities or the board will be able to withhold it if it isn't, because you're going to pay per person. So even if it's a 16-bed facility, doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to be paying for 16 people in that particular day. It's a per-person cost is what they'll allocate. So if it's, if they only have 12 beds, or 10 beds, or eight beds, that's the cost that will be billed to the, after you take out medicating insurance, that would, that would fund it. So there should be, there should be a mechanism in place to make sure that, that you're just paying a per-person rate per day. But I think the facility is going to be well utilized. And when we talked about the Leeds program, about diverting people that have been charged with, or that have, are in the opioid crisis, you know, we had some, some meetings, some discussion in our staff meetings about, you know, IVCing these folks that were going out and were giving Narcan to, you know, we gave Narcan to one person three times, the fourth time, we didn't make it in time. What do we do in those first three times? Can we, can we have, if we had a facility, which we don't have, that we could take somebody and they could start the detox process? I mean, do we have the potential to save some folks that we're losing right now? And I think, I think that's, that's the other, the other side beside the IVCs and getting them treatment, these people that we're, we're having to deal with on, on the opioid process. And I think it's going to get continuously worse for at least the next several years, until, until our society, not just in Jacksonville, but across the country, till our society starts to recognize what they need to do for these, about opioids in general.
Any questions about the interlocal agreement, and any suggestions you have? Mr. Thomas, any last-minute comments? Thank you for serving on the task force.
We will see, I guess.
Anything else?
No, sir, we do appreciate y'all's time this evening, and we look forward to the next council workshop and meeting.
Your motion?
Your adjournment.
Second.
Who's in second, in all favor?
Aye.